Harrison, city council meeting for April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. If you'd please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can stand standing, I'd like to invite Pastor Michael Futrell. He's the pastor of Triumphant Baptist Church here in Harrison for this evening's invocation.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, I thank you for this evening, Lord, I thank you for this opportunity where we can come together as a community and take care of some of our town's business. Lord, we want to thank you so much for the leadership that you've seen fit to give to our community. I pray you give them wisdom from above. Lord, I pray that you give them good health, good safety. I pray you bless them and their families. And Lord, also I want to thank you for the community members that are here this evening. I also pray that you bless them. And Lord, I pray that you just lead and guide and direct this evening. We ask all in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Egner. Mr. Grubbs.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mr. Mains.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
I'd like to move that we excuse Tony Egner.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mains.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
First item this evening is approval of the council meeting minutes from April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and the executive summary from the same evening. Does it move?
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Done, roll call, please.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mains.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
This evening, we have Bill Floyd here from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, to make a check presentation, if you'd like to come forward.
Up and down, you're getting too comfortable in your seat.
Photo op.
I wanted to bring up our new officer, John Pagan and Melinda Gerty, very instrumental on helping to set up Harrison.
Yeah, step on up there.
Mike wants to make a donation to the Harrison Mayor's Fund for a thousand dollars. It was summer and we'll be back in the fall.
Thank you. Okay, pull that right there. You had girls today, they called that the grip and grin.
I'm sorry, is it Mr. or Mrs. Gerty? Very good, nice to meet you. Shannon, do we have somebody from the chamber here?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I don't think anybody from the chamber was able to make it. We did have an online board meeting today. And typically, they would give you a litany of things that are going on. I just wanted to mention that yesterday, we had a chamber sponsor at a meeting at the high school to talk about workforce development. And there's a company that is actually based in Kansas City, but the gentleman is actually from Cincinnati. And he has a mechanism by which he will hook up companies with underserved populations, disadvantaged, disabled people. And there's a huge number of those people out there that want to work. So, the chamber's working to make that process available very affordably to small and large companies. So, you'll see more about that in the next few weeks, and I think it's going to be a really great program. The member of the month, Jeff Biddle, Health Mart Pharmacy, you probably all know him. He's also on the school board, and they're meeting tonight, so he wasn't able to be here, but he wanted to send his appreciation for being noted tonight.
Thank you, Shannon. We had a visitor sign up today, Peggy Harmeyer. If you'd like to come to the podium, you can tell us what your concerns are, and we can have some discussion about that.
I'm just going to read from the script.
That's fine.
And here's a copy of the script.
Okay.
And some pictures I'd like to show you.
Thank you. Do you want to pass these pictures down? Look at them. There's a copy.
All right, so again, thanks for giving me the opportunity to address with you a situation that's been weighing heavy on me and my family for about a year now. My house, which is, my mom lives in, is at two seventeen North Hill Street in Harrison. I've paid taxes on the house since I purchased it twenty-two years ago. Last summer, a tenant living at four thirteen High Street constructed a wooden fence made of two-by-fours and chicken wire, completely enclosing my driveway off the back alley and restricting all access to my garage. They've also enclosed at least two pit bulls in this fencing, making access dangerous. They've also piled lots of junk within the fence and have damaged the existing decorative fence that I erected in two thousand thirteen. My mother lives in my house and spends much of her time gardening in her yard. She's entitled to quiet enjoyment of her property, which is not possible because of the dogs barking and the tenants' constant fighting. We fear for her safety, she's ninety-three years old, by the way, when she's in the yard. The tenants are known to the Harrison Police Department. A Harrison officer recently told me and my husband that these tenants are drug addicts and that they are well-known by the police department. But apparently, the police department can't enforce that the fence construction be taken down because it's a civil matter and not a criminal matter. Excuse me. My concern is, one, we would be held liable if anybody got hurt by the dogs or the rickety construction and the piled-up junk in the yard, or for any other number of reasons. It's our property, so we would be accountable, yet we can't get this cleaned up and removed. Two.
This fence is on your property?
Yes. Yes. Two, we don't want to have to pay for junk removal since we did not put the junk on the property in the first place. And three, we can't sell the hill, two seventeen North Hill Street, until this issue is resolved.
This fence is on like between the two garage stores.
I know, he just moved it.
This is your garage?
Yeah, they both are. And it was, it originally was both of them, but I guess he thought he was nice and he moved it over to only one. Most important, most importantly, we fear retaliation from the tenants. We don't want my mom to be in danger if they should get upset about being evicted. This is the main reason we have not gone to the property ourselves to deconstruct the fence. Fear of our own safety and the fear of my mom. So, let me just tell you, last section here, we've taken the following steps. We've contacted the owner of four thirteen High Street, Dave Bischoff, and he's here today last December. We explained the situation and told him we would sue if tenants did not take down the fencing and return our property to its previous state. He asked us not to do that and said he would file an eviction notice. An eviction notice was, has been filed. Harrison Police confirmed this about a month ago. Also, my husband, Dave, has talked to Rusty in the zoning department. They have driven to the property to assess it, but still, nothing has changed. So, in conclusion, please advise us on what our next step should be. We are law-abiding, tax-paying citizens of Harrison. We have not gotten any resolution and fear we are in danger from a liability standpoint, personal safety standpoint, and because our property is being devalued. Now, I don't know if Dave is allowed to speak because...
He is. Would you like to make a statement?
Like she said, I just filed an eviction notice, and that's underway as we speak. But I've told the tenant many times to get it out of there, it's not my property. And like she said, there's all kinds of people back there, I don't know who they are. So, I did file an eviction, my attorney's working on it.
So, are we just concerned, what are our best actions? It's just saying they're stuck there forever, they need the fence. I mean, are we still getting rid of piles of metal junk and taking the fence?
We're going to, we're going to address that here in a second. Are you, have you said what you, everything?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Shannon, can you give us an update? Shannon is the Building and Zoning Department Director, and I called him after I spoke to you earlier today, so he could refresh himself on what has occurred from the town, the city's aspect on this. He's going to tell you what's occurred and what steps we will continue to pursue and what maybe you could do legally do yourselves. I don't know. He's not a lawyer, so he can't give you legal advice, but...
But I play one on television, so... No, so, I was made aware of this about, I'm guessing, three months ago. Rusty and I went out and visually saw this, confronted the renter, and told him that it was unacceptable situation. And then had, and he had a week to rectify it, to find someplace to put his dogs and to get the fence removed. Of course, he didn't do that, as you indicated. So, it's very difficult to give warrants to people who are renting. So, we have spoken to Mr. Bischoff, Rusty has, and said this is an intolerable situation. And if it's not taken care of, and we're going to give him another two weeks to have it taken care of, and it's his responsibility to either get the person evicted and remove the fence from your property at no cost to you, and to also get rid of the debris. So, he has been warned that if it's not done in two weeks, and I know you can't control the court system, but you can't control your property, and it's incumbent upon you to do that, or you will be given a citation to mayor's court. So, that's where we're at. We try to work with people, as you all know. I don't know this for sure, Chief, but it's my understanding that a police officer went to that property and may have been bitten by one of the dogs. So, it is, is a very, you know, really, it's a very sad situation and one where I can understand where you are not willing to go onto the property to remove it yourself for fear of being bitten as well, or accosted.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If Dave Bischoff or, you know, all three of us are friends, like, went down there to take care of it, would the police show up and help us and be there as a backup?
You're worried that they will come out and confront you, is that correct?
Yeah, and we know that they're a menace.
And the dogs. I can't speak for the chief, that's a, that's a police matter. Our department would not go there to remove it. We can't do that. Chief, I can't speak for you and your officers if you would be there to allow them to remove it.
Send the officer down, I just can't promise you that while the officer's standing there, that a more serious call doesn't come in, and we have to leave and go to the more serious call.
So...
These are vicious dogs, do they come under animal control? Can we have...
It can come to that.
Have these animals removed? I mean, I've walked by there, I live in the neighborhood, and these dogs are...
That would probably be a next step in conjunction with issuing a citation.
Are inappropriate, yeah.
So, yeah, we can do that. We can, you know, indicate that these dogs are a menace and then have, yes, sir.
Yeah, when I served in Vinson, I almost got attacked by a dog.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and it's pretty, you know, we can call the county on that issue. So, that's something that we can do in advance of you being forced to remove the fence.
Having served on the Board of Zoning Appeals for ten years, obviously, they didn't come to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for a permit to put a fence up.
That's correct.
Because that never would have been approved when it's across someone else's property. So, where does, where does that put the city as far as the Board of Zoning Appeals? Don't they have some kind of authority?
No, not really, as far as enforcement goes. I mean, they only approve, and in this case, of course, they didn't come, so you couldn't have even considered it. But it really comes down to property maintenance and what we can do legally. And sometimes, our hands are tied, as the mayor can attest. We had an issue on Whitewater that it took a year to get resolved, and we just kept going to court. And then, you know, some, we get very frustrated, too, because as things go to court, things get, you know, delayed or postponed, and so that just kind of makes the homeowner or renter, in this case, and that case, more empowered and feel like they can just keep stretching it. And, but that person did get evicted as well, and that property was cleaned up, but it took a year. Now, I'm not saying that's going to be the case here, because I think Mr. Bischoff is very interested in seeing resolution here as well.
Well, I think, I think it does. I think it falls on the property owner, Mr. Bischoff in this case, and, and, and he has the ability to confront the aggressive dogs as well as the tenants that are inside the house. But it can be a process. Eviction is a process.
It's my understanding that you went and it was postponed, correct?
Oh, I have no doubt.
So, here we go down that circle, but, yes, I know.
The unfortunate, the unfortunate thing is, the most complicated cases are always the ones that get the most attention and take the longest to resolve. Shannon, when he first got here, we had a case that took almost four and a half years to resolve. You remember it very well. It almost was like divine intervention that we got to get that one resolved. But I don't believe that's the case here. We have a willing owner to help resolve the case. We do have a little bit of a court matter where he's got to get through the court system to get the eviction in place. We don't want to go through any of the adverse actions where we declare a nuisance, bring contractor in. Those are all problematic and very expensive for both us, the tenant...
No, it's...
Well, but if we, if we were to have it removed, we can't just send two city guys over and tear it down. We have to have a contractor come, do a licensed contractor, to do that work, because if there's damage that's alleged that occurs, they're bonded. And so, there's a process we have to go through, and it's not as simple as just two guys go out and tear the fence down, a couple two-by-fours and some chicken wire. It's not that simple. If we were to go do that, two city guys, it might take an hour. But if we do that, and then there's issues that arise from it, because we didn't use licensed contractors to do the work, we have problems.
But Mr. Bischoff can do it himself, with friends, or whoever he wants.
Exactly, if he follows his lease agreement and posts notices and tells them to address the dog situation, but then something happens with the dogs, that's a whole different case.
Yes, my concern, I'm, hey, so, is what if, like, today, tomorrow, a dog, somebody, so a kid gets in the fence and gets hurt?
So, that's another thing where...
We've been patient as we can possibly be, and we're just worried that we're going to get some kind of liability if somebody gets hurt on our property, and we're trying to follow it.
So... The, I, I think that they've, and I'm going to use this term intentionally, fenced themselves in, that if their dogs bite somebody within the area that they delineate with the fence, I don't think you would have the liability you're concerned with. Our law director's over there. But, well, no, no, wait. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going there, I'm not going there. We cannot declare a dog a vicious dog just because it's a certain breed. There has to be an initial act, and that's what I was going to him for. We can't uniformly just say every X breed of dog is a vicious dog and...
You actually have an ordinance for a vicious dog, I have to get requires from the likes of body wants, and then that, and then not, you're not taking certain proper precautions.
Right, so there's, there has to be an actual act that occurs before the dog meets that criteria. And it sounds like that might have occurred, but maybe the reporting hasn't occurred to trigger that. And so, you might want to review that ordinance, you can probably check with Shannon, he probably is much more familiar with it.
It sounds, I'm betting, Mayor, if that occurs, all three of them are going to be liable. When an attorney comes to sue, they're going to come after all three of them.
Attorneys, they make money by, they go after, they go after anybody, but, but...
That's my fear, because we've done nothing, all in the mother, we have Peggy Sutter as an attorney, and the first thing she said was, you guys need to go tear it down yourself, because you, we could be liable.
What's on...
Well, the eviction notice shouldn't take that long. I mean, Mr. Bischoff knows how eviction notices go, so do I. And it doesn't take that long, once you get to the court, they'll get like thirty-seven days or thirty-nine days, whatever it is. And at that day, the, the court will send out a representative. Now, they won't make them move it, but they'll make Mr. Bischoff and you move all their stuff out to the street. Well, that's, that's what will happen.
So, we, we want to see a resolution as much as you do. From the city's standpoint, we have to follow a legal process. As soon as we violate that legal process, first, we go back to step zero. And second, we have liabilities at that point.
So, we go back to our property, and I stick my arm or leg in there and let the dog bite me, file it before...
Well, I think that we've already had one...
Don't let the dog bite you, please.
We've already had a, we've already had one incident, I think, right?
And two.
My property?
Oh. If there's an incident that did occur, it should be reported, and that's the first step of that violent or vicious dog or vicious pet ordinance. It's not restricted to dogs, vicious pet ordinance.
So, if it does happen, within minutes, you need to report that.
And then, we can take the next steps.
And it's, it's always good to have a witness for that as well. So, I think Mr. Bischoff is, you know, he's talked to Rusty, Rusty's been very emphatic that this cannot continue, and you, you were aware of that. So, you know, we're going to make sure that, I don't know how long, when has it been extended to?
It was supposed to be on fourteen or fifteen, or fourteen eighteen, I call them up. So, I got on them really hard today, so it's out of there now.
Okay. So, so...
It's tomorrow?
No, he's going to get back with...
Oh, he's going to get back with... It was originally scheduled for the fifteenth, which was last Friday.
So, we know, we know that you cannot control the courts, so you're at their mercy to some degree, but our only avenue is to cite you. So, and, you know, when you are cited, if it's not taken care of by the time you come to our mayor's court, you'll have an update, Rusty will have an update, and it'll be discussed at mayor's court. But we want to get that ball started as well, so that even if it's a continuation until the court issues that eviction, at least we also have it on record in our mayor's court. So, that's why we don't want to be empathetic to you, but we also want you to understand that we have our process that we have to initiate.
You got all right, ball rolling. Yeah, that's all you need to do.
So, this is a pretty flimsy fence, right? Chicken wire, do these dogs get out?
I've been told by one of the neighbors that they have, that it's running around.
And what's the recourse? I live in this neighborhood, if I'm walking down the street and one of these dogs comes to me, what's, what's my right to? And I, anybody that can answer that, do I have a right to defend myself?
If you're attacked, you do, but if, if, if any dog's running free, not on a leash, not under the control of the owner, you can call them, the SPCA will pick it up, and then they have to go claim their dog. I've, I've seen many people in the city complain to me about that, and we don't have a dog, or you're calling the county.
Thank you, folks, for coming in, appreciate it.
I hope that got you some answers. You're welcome.
I have three dogs, they won't bite you, they'll lick you to death.
Yeah. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak during the visitor's section? I have a proclamation I'd like to read. So, I'm going to tell you, this was initially prepared for a reading on April fifth. However, on April fifth, I had a special proclamation for the twelve-hundredth anniversary of our sister city in Germany, and I didn't want to have two proclamations that same evening. I wanted to reserve that evening for that purpose. So, I'm reading this proclamation this evening. It's very similar to one I read every April, and it's a proclamation honoring April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Jerry Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, increase economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. Now, therefore, I, William Nyer, Mayor of the city of Harrison, do hereby recognize and honor the date of April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day in Harrison, Ohio, and I urge all citizens to annually celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect trees, our trees and woodlands, and urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I'm going to ask Mike, because I'm sure he knows, what day are we doing our Arbor Day program at the library this year?
Um, yeah.
April twenty-sixth.
What is it?
Twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth. Lexi also is on...
Lexi is also on that board.
April twenty-sixth is what I have on my calendar.
Lexi and Mike serve on our tree board, we are a Tree City USA. We have a program scheduled seven PM, I believe, at the library.
Seven PM at the library on April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth, and they will be sapling trees, very small. And this year, we are providing, it's persimmon trees? Persimmon trees. So, we have a limited number of those for people that come to the program, so...
I believe we have fifty, fifty saplings.
So, we have fifty saplings to distribute.
There will also be some larger trees that we're giving away.
Yeah, there'll be a raffle or a drawing of some sort for a couple larger trees, and I'm not sure what variety those will be.
Probably autumn blaze.
Maybe autumn blaze.
That's one of our favorites. If it's not that, it's a Japanese lilac.
If it's not that, it's a tree.
It will be some sort of tree that we're giving them, that's likely the...
So, that concludes the guest and visitor's section. We'll move into the business section. Our first item is to set a public hearing for zoning changes and PUD overlay at Edgewood Road property. This is the new development that we have been talking about for many months now.
Can we do the, the fourth?
Next one.
Eighteenth, seven PM.
So, May eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
It's got to be a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Or, I'm sorry, seventeenth, I was still looking at Wednesdays, seventeenth.
Yeah, because, yeah.
So, May seventeenth, seven PM is the...
Correct.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes, motion to set a public hearing, May seventeenth at seven PM for the Edgewood Road property. Wilson seconds.
We have a motion second, roll call, please.
Dole.
Yay.
Mains.
Calendar marked, yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
The next item is vote on legislation for zoning changes that we heard recently, earlier this evening during our public hearing. It has all to do with Section eleven seventy, I believe.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting, so we can have printed information regards to everything, all the changes.
Second.
We have a motion second to table this to the next council meeting, so that there can be some consideration on what was heard during the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Mains.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Do we have any legislation that we need to add this evening? We will move on to the reports. I had heard from most of the organizations that provided fish fries during the Lenten season that they were very successful this year. I know personally, I worked at the Kiwanis several weekends, or Fridays, they did very well this year. I know that the other, the Legion, I heard from Jerry, that they had been doing very well. So, I thank the community for their support of those fish fries. Those funds come back into our community, all those organizations that, they're service organizations that provide service back into the community. I'd like to thank the VFW for their donation to the mayor's fund, it's very generous, I appreciate it. And that's all I have for this evening as far as reports. I will not be here at the next meeting, so we will need the vice mayor to preside over that meeting. I will be in Germany to provide, we're going to be entering formally into our sister city agreement with Meckasheim, Germany at that time. They have a festival, May Fest, and on Saturday night is the highlight of the festival, and during that Saturday evening is when the signing of the documents will occur.
And that meeting's on a Wednesday.
And that meeting's on a Wednesday.
Mr. Law Director, do you have a report this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, other than not getting my invitation, go to Germany. You have to. Please someone review the documents.
Their lawyers taking it.
That's cold.
Is it too late for you to get a plane ticket?
That's why they got fax machines, they can fax it to you.
Google Translate it.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a report this evening?
The only thing I've got is you, if you get the Community Connect magazine, you'll see on the front page where the water softing is gonna be coming online somewhere around July the thirteenth. So we're kinda happy about that. I'm a little concerned with the summer concerts when we got naked karate girls playing. It confuses me a little bit there. That might be one I wanna attend, I'm not sure.
Think you'll be disappointed.
Also, I wanna, I wanna do, I do wanna mention that e-gaming is in, in Harrison.
He wants to see that.
It's very, being very successfully presented in Harrison. So if you enjoy going to the boats and playing little machines and drinking a few beverages, you'll be more than happy to go to either the VFW or the, or the Legion. We've got them both. We're both open to the public. And part of our money, like building a diet, goes to the Harrison Mayor's Fund and the Legion's the same way. Ours will be presented the first Tuesday of the month. So I invite you all to come down and enjoy yourselves. That's it, Commander.
Thank you.
Comer.
Mr. Grubbs, do your report this evening?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. We did have fire committee this evening and just a couple of items to report on. It'll probably be a little bit longer than some of my fellow councilmen would prefer, but I'm gonna jump into this. So we did cover the monthly report for March. We did have forty-six, um, fire rescue calls and two hundred and fifteen EMS. To date, we have six hundred and twelve, which is about ninety more than the same time last year. So we continue to see an increase in our, in our fire department calls that are dispatched out. And as the community continues to grow, whether it's the Edgewood Development or any other development, we'll continue to see an increase in those numbers. The, um, fire inspections continue to go on month to month. And continue to, for those businesses that are out there, make sure that you have your fire exits properly lit and fire extinguishers checked. The fire inspector does an excellent job going out and about and working with the business owners and making sure they're up to compliance. But make sure that you do your part and you're ready for the inspector when he arrives. It looks like you probably did a hundred and some odd different inspections just for the month. So, um, actually, I have a number here. Sixty-eight, sorry, sixty-eight and a total of a hundred and sixty-seven inspections for the month. There has been a lot of discussion in the community recently in regards to mutual aid a fire department gives to other communities as well as what we receive in communities. It was brought up by a fellow councilman. It's been a discussion throughout the community and I think it's the point, or I think it's important to point out because as we continue to grow, our fire department is built and designed and properly managed to address all situations. In two thousand nineteen, there were two thousand seventy-three EMS runs. In two thousand twenty, there's two thousand one hundred and twenty-six. In twenty-one, two thousand two hundred and sixteen. And year-to-date, twenty-two, it's six hundred and twelve, uh, total EMS runs. Of those amounts, we're only, um, receiving mutual aid about, on average, two percent of the time. So outside departments come help us approximately two percent of the time on those calls. Now, it may be because of location. If an outlying resident, uh, happens to be closer to Crosby Township, Crosby may show up first. Or it could be Green Township coming to help us. That's the first one that popped into my mind. Green Township coming to help us. But on average, we're only receiving help about two percent of the time. And we're providing help, probably on average, about three and a half, four percent of the time to other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions. So we're leaving Harrison to help Whitewater Township with the fire or help Crosby Township with the fire. All those numbers show historically that we're doing just fine. We're addressing the situation. We're able to meet all our demands as well as help other communities. And other communities are designed to help us when, when there is a need. I think it was, I think it was specifically Whitewater Township coming into, or I'm sorry, Crosby Township coming into the city of Harrison a lot more than what they should be coming in, especially with Parks of Whitewater and, and Trails and all the rest of the new subdivisions are going out there. But, um, they are not coming in here and it was addressed specifically from the chief of Whitewater Township, that they are, they are fine with the number of runs that come into town and our chief, uh, is not concerned in any way whatsoever with the number of mutual aid calls we go on or receive. But I did wanna bring that up because I think it's important to point out if people see other, other, uh, fire departments rolling around town, what's going on. Usually it is because of a specific event, um, where we may need assistance. Or if our fire department is addressing another situation, we may have to have somebody come into town to cover a different run. But by no means is it saying that we can't handle what's going on in our city. We have an excellent fire department that is well-trained for every situation and to manage all events that take place here. And we will continue to make sure that we meet the needs of the fire department, police department, utility department any way we can, um, within our financial restrictions. But, but we will continue to make sure that all of our services, um, grow respectively with the community to make sure that we're meeting their need. So, um, other than that, we continue to make sure that we properly plan. The fire department works on a different subject. Fire department has been working diligently with Hamilton County Emergency Management to make sure that we plan with this being usually tornado season. It's also the time where we make sure that all our, um, major event planning is in order. That way, if something does come through town, we have structure and discipline and we can manage those events. Other than that, I think that's all I have. I'll stop now. Well, I could go on, but.
So the fire services, fire service as a whole through Hamilton County, for that state of Ohio, around the nation, mutual aid is an integrated part of that service. Everybody knows that you can walk past, drive past the fire station and the trucks might all be in the bay. That's great because there's no emergency going on. But if your community next door has two emergencies going on, you got equipment sitting idle, why not send it? And so that's part of what that brotherhood fellowship of firefighters do is they, they work together because next month, it might be my community that needs that assistance instead of theirs. And if, if we're up one month and they're up another month or somebody else is up, I'm happy that we could take the assistance and got it and I'm glad to be able to give it when we can. So I have no concerns about the level of, of this mutual aid going on. Unfortunately, police departments are more territorial and because every jurisdiction has slightly different regulations, that doesn't occur as liberally. We have internal local agreements that with the fire department, emergencies are emergencies. You pretty much address them all the same way. So I have absolutely no heartache with it.
And I'd like to add one thing. If anybody has any questions, whether they're, uh, community members, whether they're firefighters, whoever it is, if you have questions, please go directly to the chief or to the mayor. Or feel free to reach out to, uh, any of us that are on fire committee at any time. You know, we have the statistics, we have the numbers that are reported on a monthly basis. We have a fire committee meeting every second Tuesday at about six-thirty.
Third Tuesday.
I'm sorry, third.
Third. Second meeting night.
Third Tuesday. Third Tuesday, second, second council meeting of each month, we have a fire committee meeting and we address all the statistics. So if you have questions, please stop by and say us. Ask us the questions that you have concerns about and we're willing to address them. That's all I have.
Mr. Samuels, do your report this evening?
Uh, yes, sir, I do, Mayor. From one excellent department to another, the police committee did meet tonight. Relatively quick meeting, so not much going on, so that is a good thing. The monthly traffic crash report for March, there were a total of twenty-two accidents with thirteen on public roadways and nine on private property. Staffing levels are back up to a full staff of twenty-three. And there are no employees that are currently out sick or quarantined due to COVID-nineteen. The regulated vehicle ordinance or the golf cart, there have been seventeen inspections to date with sixteen permits issued for on-road use, which I believe that number has been consistent for the past couple of months. The police department will be participating in the wreckage destruction. So the shred truck will be on-site on April twenty-first. The Moose Lodge did make a donation of a little over five hundred dollars to the Harrison Police Department and that will be used to go towards the school buckets fundraiser that is going on. The service garage roof, I believe down on Sycamore, has, the replacement has been completed. There was a minor adjustment to the cost due to the replacement of some rotted-out boards, which is only additional eleven hundred dollars from the original estimate. That's all I have for a police committee. And the finance committee meeting will take place next Tuesday on April twenty-sixth at four-thirty. And I just found out I had a last-minute obligation that I won't be here in the next council meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
He's the vice mayor, so he gets to fill in.
Watch a few meetings, it's easy.
We need all hecklers to come to the next meeting.
Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
I guess, Mayor, I do. We had our Easter event this past Saturday. I think it was a pretty successful event. We had several hundred kids there. Yeah, everybody was having fun, so it was a good one. We have some improvements that we're gonna make for next year, but overall, it went pretty well. We'd like to give a big thanks to Boy Scout Troop four oh eight for providing the breakfast as well as all of the volunteers that put on the event. It took a lot of people and it went pretty smoothly. So that went well. Our last rec meeting was on April thirteenth. Largely, we just talked about the Easter event because it was coming up. But we also talked about our summer fun. The sign-ups for that are on Saturday, April twenty-third, from ten AM to noon. And Sunday, April twenty-sixth, from six PM to eight PM. And that's in the multipurpose room here. And then we also have coming up next month, the food truck rally. That's on May twenty-first. That's actually thrown by the district, but I'll have more details on that at the next meeting. Our next IT meeting is May third at six forty-five and that's all I have.
The Easter event went great. It's the first time in, I think twenty nineteen was the last time we got to hunt eggs outdoors. One year it was canceled and one year the weather was really crummy and we moved it inside. But I think the kids had a great time.
Mr. Mainz, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. I do believe though, the fellow that was operating the megaphone at the Easter was quite obnoxious. He used the siren too much, but the kids enjoyed it, but you know, that's.
Was that you?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, it was.
I thought it was. You said the obnoxious.
Obnoxious is, is my spiritual gift.
Yes, I, I heard that.
Something God has given me. Yep, be obnoxious.
Your wife told me that.
It's God-given gift, it's not mine. I wanna thank Pastor Michael Futrell for giving our invitation this evening. It was his very first time and it did extraordinary. It was quite, uh, it was good. And I do wanna extend the invitation to other pastors in the community. If you would like to partake in our invitation, I can get you on the schedule. Folks, I'd like to thank you for coming out. I live in that neighborhood and I've, yeah, it's been a concern for me. So I'm glad to hear that everybody is working together to, to move towards a resolution to, to get that property cleaned up. On April fourteenth, I attended the OKI meeting in downtown Cincinnati. And, uh, I had the distinct pleasure of sitting next to Denise Street House and she tells me she would like to come out to Harrison and pay us a visit. So I will follow up with her and get her to come out and tell us what's going on throughout the county. I also spent some time with a fellow by the name of David Shuey. He works with OKI and he develops a lot of their apps on the website. So I would encourage everybody to go to OKI.org, check out their applications page. They have a, an application that you can go to your home, you can search it, you can find out if your home is a good candidate for solar panels, for example. They also have locations for EV charging stations and all kinds of other great transportation app, applications on that webpage. So you'll, if you can't sleep tonight, that's a good way to spend your time on the computer rather than giving me a hard time on social media. Hank Manager was there in attendance. Oh, the other thing with David Shuey is he would like to, um, increase the electric vehicle charging station footprint at the University of Cincinnati and here in the city of Harrison. So I invited him down and, and connecting him with the University of Cincinnati so that they can, uh, and he came to our, our College of Engineering Design Expo, right? And met with the dean and, and we got him kinda networked there. And, uh, and got to see all the great things that our, our seniors in engineering at UC are, have developed this past year. Great technologies and lots of great future products that they're gonna bring to market. But then he'd also, you know, Harrison being the Interstate seventy-four corridor would be a primary spot for an EV charging station. So he would like to, to talk with us about that. So we'll have some future plans there. Hank Manager was there. He's continuing to serve as a citizen-at-large with OKI and he is doing much better than the last time I saw him. So it's good to see him and see that he's doing well, uh, post-surgery. And, um, lastly, we had a fundraiser at Chandler's for the Doug Dunaway Motocross Park this past Saturday. We raised over fourteen hundred dollars. And one of the things that's notable is that Dick and Karen Dunaway were there in presence. That's Doug Dunaway's parents. And they were very appreciative of the city's support for the motocross park as well as all that the volunteers in this, uh, have been doing to, to keep Doug's memory alive and, uh, obviously enjoy riding our dirt bikes, that sort of a thing. Of course, Harrison is the only motocross park east of the Mississippi. There's only two in the country that, that is free. So that's an interesting thing about that. Lastly, you mentioned our tree board meeting?
Um, just what we mentioned earlier.
Right, it'll be at seven PM at the library and we'll be celebrating Arbor Day. And then of course, on, uh, our next council meeting is on a Wednesday. And that's Economic Development. We'll meet at, uh, five forty-five and Streets and Bike Pass will meet at six fifteen. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting is moved to Wednesday anytime a primary or general election falls on a council evening. So it moves to the next evening, which is always gonna be a Wednesday. Mrs. Wilson, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Harrison VFW for being a continued supporter of the Harrison Mayor's Fund. I know that the Mayor's Fund really appreciates it and they do good all year long. So they, it's not only at holiday time that they need donations, it's actually all year long. So we really do appreciate your continued support. And I know that the Harrison VFW and the American Legion and the AMVETS, along with the Kiwanis, all had very successful fish fries. I don't think anyone went hungry this season. And we just like to thank everyone who, who went to one of them or all of them and, um, you know, supported the people who support our community, cause that's really, really Also, the Harrison Memorial Day Parade is planned. It'll be May the thirtieth. And they will line up at nine thirty AM in front of the grade school on Broadway and they'll march off at ten. Everyone and everyone is welcomed. We then proceed to the Glen Haven Cemetery, um, where we have a very special guest speaker this year in Chief Chuck Lindsay. So we're very proud to have him as our guest speaker this year. Our next, I'm, I'm very, um, really love seeing the Boy Scouts here tonight, um, and their leaders. Our next, I, I'm very, um, really love seeing the Boy Scouts here tonight, um, and their leaders. Um, I think it's important to come out and see what, not only did you support the, um, Easter program by having the pancake breakfast and I know I go way back with the pancake breakfast with the Boy Scouts. But it's really good to see you young gentlemen here with your leaders tonight. And maybe you're learning a little bit, something about your community that you didn't know before. So it's good to see you all here and I'm glad that you had a, um, a very successful breakfast. And I'd like to thank the Harrison Recreation Committee for all the great work that they do all year long. That is a committee that is very overlooked, very successful and very overworked. So they, I don't, I think communities that don't have a committee like we have, they don't understand what we give back to our community by having the Recreation Committee and all the work that they do. I know that when I was on rec, um, talking to other communities, they were always amazed of what recreation did on such a small budget. And, uh, I think it's really nice that we have all these activities right here in our own community. And I appreciate that you folks came tonight and talked about your problem. I think it's been an ongoing problem. I know I've heard about it. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot the city can do unless, unfortunately, unless something happens, you know? Um, but you've taken all the right steps and I commend Mr. Bischoff for trying to get, I hate to say get rid of the people, but actually that's what you're gonna be doing and maybe the problem will clear up. But you know, being a property owner and being a landlord many times, it's not easy having tenants. You never know what they're gonna do. You never know if you're gonna have a good tenant, a bad tenant. So we really sympathize with your problem and your, your, your mom, you know, we hope that, you know, she can enjoy her backyard this summer. And I think that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. We do have a Boy Scout troop here tonight. They're working on one of their merit badges. If you have any questions, I'm sure several council members would be willing to stay a couple minutes to talk with you if you have questions. I know I will be available for a few minutes after the meeting. Other scout troops have come in the past and, uh, I know that it's an important part for, uh, young, not just men, but young men and women to learn about city government, how it works, why it works and what its purpose is. It, it gives you an insight so that when you become part of this community or whatever community you happen to live in, you understand what's going on and maybe it gives you the drive and desire to become involved. So if there's nothing else this evening, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Mainz.
Yay.
Stay in the adjourn. Thank you.